Good evening and welcome to the Latrobe City Council Meeting which is being held tonight at Kernot Hall in Moorwll. Tonight's meeting is being held with councillors and guests joining us in person and virtually. I'm pleased to welcome Deputy Mayor Sharon Gibson, Councillor Potter, Councillor Lund, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe and Councillor Campbell. We also welcome our CEO, Mr Stephen P. Assanti, and the executive team. I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting here tonight on the traditional land of the Brackalong people, of the Gunnai-Kernai Nation, and I pay my respects to their elders past and present. If there are any other elders present, I'd also like to acknowledge them. Moving on to some housekeeping matters, we conduct our council meetings under the governance rules currently in place. We welcome all members of the public attending both via the live stream and in person. I thank you for respecting protocols of the meeting which ensure that we can extend the appropriate courtesy and respect throughout our meeting tonight. If councillors could ensure that they raise their hand if they wish to speak so that I can see it, remain seated to speak directly into the microphone to ensure that they can be heard within the room and via the live stream, and when voting, raise their hand and leave it raised until I call their name. We do have one leave of absence tonight, Mr CEO.
Yes, from Councillor Barnes.
Yep, and no apologies. All right, moving on to the adoption of the minutes, the next item on the agenda is item three, Adoption of Minutes from Council Meeting Held on the 27th of October 2025, commencing on page four of tonight's agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson. Councillor Pugsley, are you seconding? Yep. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
Councillor Pugsley?
No, thank you.
Any councillor wish to speak? All right, councillors, we'll put it to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, Councillor Lund, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Howe, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the minutes carried unanimously. We'll now move on to declarations of interests. Councillors, do you have any conflicts? Councillor Campbell?
10.2 and in confidential, 15.3.
10.2 and 15.3, yep. Councillor Pugsley?
I have a conflict in, I believe it's 15.4 in the confidential.
15.4. Councillors, any other conflicts of interest? No? Okay, councillors, we'll now move on to acknowledgements. Councillor Potter, you had an acknowledgement you wished to make?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge Councillor Steph Morgan, who's been nominated for the Emerging Women's Leader Award as part of the prestigious Mary Rogers Awards. This award carries special significance honouring Mary Rogers, who in 1920 became the first woman elected to local government in Victoria. Her trailblazing services opened the doors for generations of women to become civic leaders. So the Emerging Women's Leader Award recognises a first-time councillor who is already demonstrating outstanding leadership qualities, and Councillor Morgan's nomination is a testament to her commitment, vision and the positive impact she is making in our community. We're also pleased to note that Councillor Morgan will be attending the awards ceremony this week at Parliament House, representing our council and our community. So on behalf of council, I'd like to extend our congratulations to Councillor Morgan on this well-deserved recognition, and we celebrate the continuing influence of Mary Rogers' legacy in shaping strong, inclusive leadership today.
Congratulations, Councillor. Awesome, absolutely brilliant. Councillor Morgan? Councillors, do we have any other acknowledgements? Councillor Morgan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and if I'm not too embarrassed right now. I'd like to congratulate Moorwell RSL for becoming the first RSL in Victoria to become an Australian Breastfeeding Association, breastfeeding is welcome everywhere venue. It's an impactful sort of thing for them to have done, and it just makes the place more inclusive for everyone, especially women and mums. So congratulations to them, brilliant, everyone should be a part of it. I also wanted to acknowledge Caitlin Dinsdale, who won the 2025 Open Tenner Horn State Champion, or became the 2025 Open Tenner Horn State Champion very recently. She is involved with the Torregan City Band and is a phenomenal horn player and brass player, so I just wanted to acknowledge her win there, so thank you.
No worries, thanks, Councillor Morgan. Councillors, any other acknowledgements? No? All right, we shall move on to public participation. The next item is public participation from the community. Public questions, this is an opportunity for any member of the public to lodge a question to be answered at the council meeting to clarify issues of public interest. Eligible questions received in writing by 12 noon on Friday prior to the council meeting will be responded to by the CEO. And tonight's council meeting, we received two questions from the community, Mr CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the first question is from Mr Philip Edwards, and the question is, would it be possible for a Victorian council in concert with the local government inspectorate to amend their governance rules to require that adverse findings against councillors by the local government inspectorate be tabled for noting at a council meeting for public transparency? So in response to that, I can advise that, as noted on the local government inspectorate website, most of their investigations are resolved confidentially. The inspectorate may however issue a media release or publish a report on its website if they believe it's in the public interest. Therefore, there is no need for council to change its governance rules as council may choose to table for noting a publicly available finding from the inspectorate or any other state-based authority. That's the first question, Mr Mayor. The second question is from Mr Damien Andrews, and the question is, has a formal report been received documenting the outcomes and regional economic impact from the mayoral attendance at the June 2025 Torregan Band Overseas Tour? And what, if any, process has the council implemented to evaluate outcomes and ROI, return on investment, before approving future councillor overseas travel? So in response to that, I can advise that the mayor's attendance at the Torregan City Band Tour Remembrance was endorsed by council in line with the previous council's support and expenses policy, and I note that the band tour was funded by the mayor in a personal capacity. The need for councillors to present a post-travel report at a council meeting was not a requirement of the former policy. However, I can advise that the current policy that was adopted on 30th of June 2025 has a requirement that a post-travel report be presented to council for all approved international travel undertaken.
Thank you, Mr CEO. Councillors, we now move on to public speakers, and there are six members of the public who are registered to speak at tonight's meeting. For those who are speaking, you'll have three minutes. You will hear a bell at 2:30, just checking, yes, yep, we'll hear a bell at 2:30, and we ask you to wind up at the three-minute mark. Please stay at the lecturn so that any councillors that have questions can ask them of you. Our first speaker tonight is Linda Reid. Linda, if you'd like to make your way to the lecturn. And Linda's speaking on item 8.5, Central Business District Community Outreach Update.
Hello, yes, thank you. I'm speaking specifically on the Community Connectedness Programme. And just how timely is it that it has come up tonight? This is a programme designed to address crime, disadvantage, antisocial behaviour, and many of the things that we're seeing in our public places. It's also particularly timely following on from the Police Crime Forum held last week, and it was really pleasing to see some of the Latrobe city councillors there. What was not pleasing, however, was the data that was produced. The data on crime, domestic and family violence in Moorwll was extremely concerning and is basically the worst in the country. And it's not one to be proud of, it's not something that we want with us. It's even more concerning when you consider that programmes run by the Latrobe Health Assembly cannot run anymore, they either have been stopped or they will not start. There is just no funding for them, nor is there any funding, or very little funding, for youth space. These were programmes designed to address the generational needs, and some were aimed at our youth and our early childhood cohort of people, and there was very real support for families, and the evidence was coming in that they worked. I heard on the radio today, however, an appeal not to move the transit police from Torregan Railway Station. I've been a regular train traveller for some months now, and often see the transit police on the train, and they do a great job. But I'm yet to see any form of security or assistance on the new number two platform in Moorwll. There's no staff there at night, and if you get off and you're on your own, as happened to me, and you've got a number of unknown people in the car park, and you've got a choice of, if your car's parked there, of weaving your way through them, just holding your breath, putting on your big-girl undies and weaving your way through there, or, as happened to me, I had to go through the subway to make my way through. And it is scary, very, very scary. It is also the only unstaffed platform in Latrobe Valley. We heard about the safety near the bus terminals, CBD in Moorwll, Mid Valley and Torregan. Removing sense is not the answer. I don't have the answer because it's multifaceted with many causes, and there are many solutions to it. So whilst the current funding of programmes is not ideal, I urge Latrobe council to fund this very important programme as a step forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Councillors, any questions? No? Thank you, Linda. Councillor's, our next speaker, also on item 8.5, Central Business District Community Outreach Update, is Wendy Castles. Wendy here? Wendy, yep, please make your way to the lecturn.
Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak in relation to the Central Business District Community Outreach Update. I want to acknowledge the work done to date by council officers and our local law enforcement agents and agencies. Shining a light on this challenging issue, I believe, has been really important. But I want to speak in support of the Community Connectors Programme primarily. I'm drawing on my experience within the Victorian education system, and more broadly, my involvement with many years with the Australian Association of Special Education at the national level. I want to refer specifically to the Positive Behaviour Interventions and Supports Framework, or model, adopted broadly across Australian states and territory schools, government, Catholic and independent schools. It's known as the Schoolwide Positive Behaviour Support Programme in Australia. The framework emphasises five interrelated elements, and they are the systems that support staff implementing the programme, data that drives decision-making, the practices that support in-school support students, but in this case would be supporting our community members, outcomes that are in schools, social and academic. In this situation, they would be primarily social and community wellbeing, and equity. It's a programme where respect is given across the programme and authoritarian measures aren't used. The PBIS framework has three tiers of intervention. Tier one, universal primary prevention for all of us, and that includes people like me, like our previous speaker, everybody in this room. Tier two, targeted student secondary, sorry, targeted secondary prevention for some people. And tier three, intensive and individualised tertiary prevention for a few people, using approaches such as wraparound approach. I recognise the challenges facing council and our local community agencies and organisations, and our previous speaker spoke about some of those issues that we're dealing with. I feel the Community Connectors initiative sits well within this framework, and it would allow for the best practices in current programmes across Victoria to be built into our local programme here. It would offer the opportunity for flow-on from school systems, and I'd be very happy to discuss this framework further with any councillors who would be interested in future.
Thanks, Wendy. Councillors, any questions? Councillor Gibson, then Councillor Morgan, then Councillor Pugsley.
Thank you very much, Wendy. Could you please tell me again the five different statewide positive behaviour? And I ran out of time, sorry, so can you say what they are again, please?
I'm sorry, I don't quite...
Right, you said that the, under the Schoolwide Positive Behaviour Scheme or system, there was five different tiers before you got to the three tiers. This was the first one. So the first one was system support staff?
The... It's a framework for implementing and developing programmes. That framework has five interrelated elements before we even look at the tiers.
And that's the five that I'm asking what they were, please?
They include developing systems, using data to make decisions, developing practices that support the targeted group of people, designing outcomes that are social and community-oriented, and equity where there's a collaboration across the programme and it's not relying on authoritarian issues. Now, I'm very happy to email you a copy...
That would be lovely.
And I also have a number of relevant links that you can follow through with.
That would be lovely, thank you.
Councillor Morgan, you had a question?
Thank you, and through you, Mr Mayor. Wendy, how do you feel that young people and people with disabilities are being impacted by the current state of community safety issues and antisocial behaviour? Do you feel that people are sort of more... Young people and people with disability, are they being sort of missed out on in support in those areas at all?
Councillor Morgan, I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow your question.
That's okay, it wasn't very clearly asked. Do you feel as though young people and people with disabilities are not receiving the social support that they need? And are they more likely to be engaging in antisocial behaviour or being victims of it? Do you feel that's...
Yes, I think currently, how would I describe it? Currently, I don't believe that in... I don't believe what's happening within the Latrobe Valley communities, and particularly Moorwll, is addressing those needs. Right from the broader interventions that are not supporting them, I don't believe they're getting the secondary interventions, and certainly not the tertiary interventions, or those tiers, the three tiers. Does that...
I believe so, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pugsley, you had a question?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to hear more of what you meant by wraparound approach, please.
Okay. Look, the wraparound approach to providing support at the tertiary level or the third-tier level has been around for quite a while, but it's where the person is looked at in a holistic way, but all of their needs are looked at, and the services are wrapped around that person. It's a pretty basic sort of description, but I can put you in touch with further information about that if you'd like it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, any other questions? No? Thank you, Wendy, appreciate your time, thank you. Councillors, our next speaker on item 8.5, Central Business District, is Jewel Burchill-Robins. Is Jewel here? Yep. Thanks, Jewel. You'll hear a bell at 2:30 and one at 3 minutes.
Hello, Mayor and councillors. My name is Jewel Burchill-Robins, and I am the Youth Co-Chair at Gibbsland Youth Spaces. We come across many young people... We come across many young people every day and more now than ever, we need support and action to keep them safe. Young people are our future, so why don't we take action now? At Youth Space, we help keep young people in school and off the street with our Reengage program. We are also actively contributing with the proactive police. And as a young person myself that lives in Latrobe, I want to feel safe. Our Reengage program assists young people across the valley in engaging back into secondary schooling. These are young people who are experiencing challenges in attending school regularly or having become disengaged for various reasons. We aim to focus on addressing social connections and mental health and wellbeing, as well as offering emotional support. We do this in a safe and supportive environment by implementing a series of workshops, strategy building sessions, peer support and equipping participants with the tools and supports to assist them throughout their secondary schooling. Many of the young people that come into our space were likely to be on the streets. As we find young people out of things to be able to do and are found being bored, they resort to crime. They go into our local spaces, such as Mid Valley or the Terrelegan Shopping Centre, and they take from stores. We've found that a lot of young people and these crimes are coming from food. They're stealing food because every day they have to eat. At Youth Space, we accommodate for that and we hand out over 100 meals to young people every single week. We have over 2,200 young people signed up for Gippsland Youth Spaces and you don't have to be signed up to access our space. We are keeping over 2,200 young people off the streets, fed, in a safe environment with warm clothes, food, a pantry for them, access to a washing machine and dryer and any other vital necessities that they need to be able to go among their day. Thank you.
Thanks, Jewel. Councillors, any questions? Councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson?
I have possibly a couple of questions for you. Thank you, Jewel. At Youth Space, do you currently engage with other partner organisations to deliver the services you currently offer?
Yes, we do have a few organisations that we partner with. G-CARZA is a big one, as well as being able to support young people into access to other services, such as Headspace, Quantum, Proactive Police. We've got a very good partnership with them as well.
Excellent. And how do you find that relationship? Does that sort of help fill the gaps in your organisation and what you can offer? Does that make sense?
Yes, no, definitely. Thank you. It helps young people to feel comfortable around these people. We actually had the police come in one day and we had a program that was yoyos with the popos. So they came in and they made yo-yo biscuits with some of our young people. They were in plain clothing. As soon as they, as soon as the young people found out that they were police and they'd taken off their jacket and they had police wear underneath, they ran. They went to the corner of the room. This is because young people are so terrified of the police in our region. Being able to have access to these services in at Youth Space, it helps young people to be able to see that these police officers are real people, that they are just like you and me and that they care for us.
Sorry, let me just figure out how to phrase this question. With the work that Youth Space does to sort of outreach into the community and find young people who need Youth Space support, do you currently find that you're adequately equipped to reach out into all the areas where young people need that support?
Unfortunately, at the moment, we're not. So due to budget cuts and funding from government being very, very scarce, we're on a shoestring budget, which means we only have three staff members at the moment. We are on a strict two-adult ratio, so we have to have an employee or two employees or an employee and a volunteer with our young people at all times, which means to keep our space open and to do outreach, we need to have at least four staff members. And at the moment, we only have three. We do have outreach to two schools, local schools here in Moorwll. However, our space is having to be closed during those times, which means young people don't have access to it there.
Thank you, Jewel.
Yep. Thanks, councillor Gibson.
Thank you very much, Jewel. Now, I don't know whether you'll be able to answer the questions or not. If you can't, that's okay. Could you tell me, is there more and more homeless youth occurring? And if so, do you know why?
So unfortunately, yes, there is. There has been a massive spike, especially around our region and in Gippsland and abroad. Young people don't have safe places to go. And a lot of the time, unfortunately, the resources available and organisations that are meant to be there and helping prevent these young people from becoming homeless aren't able to do the right thing.
Thank you. One more, please, Mr Mayor.
Yep, not a problem. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you. Okay. And if they can't access any of these resources, they're on the street?
Yes, that's correct.
No worries. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Gibson. Councillors, any other questions? Nope, too late. Councillors, we now move on to our next two speakers who are speaking on item 8.6, Moorwll Recreation Reserve Turf Cricket Pitchers. Our first speaker is Jordan Campbell. Is Jordan here? Yep. Just to let you know, Jordan, you've got three minutes. You hear a bell at 2:30 and then another at 3 minutes. And if you can wrap it up, then that'd be great. The floor is yours.
No worries. Thank you. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk on behalf of the Moorwll Cricket Club tonight. Moorwll Cricket Club is a community club with three adults men's teams and one adults women's team. We currently field six junior teams ranging from under eights to under sixteens, which are made up of both mixed gender and separate boys and girls teams. There are currently in excess of 130 members, both playing and volunteering. The club has a history in Moorwll that can be traced back to 1879 and has had a presence on the Moorwll Recreation Reserve since 1920. Turf cricket has been played on the Moorwll Rec Reserve since 1946. Moorwll Cricket Club was approached by council officers in May 2025 in relation to the ongoing maintenance of the four turf cricket pitches on Moorwll Rec Reserve. During the three initial meetings, there was collaborative dialogue between Moorwll Cricket Club and the council officers in response to the council officer's proposal of a single artificial wicket to replace the two existing turf wicket benches with Latrobe City to manage the installation and ongoing maintenance. At the most recent meeting on November 20, council officers advised that the artificial wicket was no longer their preferred option, rather a single two-wicket turf bench option instead, with cricket also now seized on the oval at the end of January to prepare the oval early for football season. One of the expected major benefits of the artificial wicket option was the quicker transition between seasonal sporting use to allow greater community use of the oval by the cricket and football clubs in season with reduced ongoing turf wicket maintenance. Cricket Australia Community Cricket Facility Guidelines recommend a turf wicket bench to be four to six wickets in size. A two-turf wicket bench would not meet the criteria to efficiently maintain the bench for a season's duration. Mention should also be made to the Cricket Victoria and AFL Victoria's Agreement on Division of Seasons that is currently in place that guides the seasonal usage between differing sports and has a resolution process for issues where seasons may overlap. As all three user groups, Moorwll Cricket Club, Moorwll Football Club and the Gippsland Power have submitted responses to the council's offers indicating that all groups preferred the option of a single artificial wicket on the Moorwll Recreation Reserve, we would like to make a suggestion that the final decision on this matter will be deferred until early in the new year with more discussion, investigation and planning relating to the expenditure on the options to be undertaken. The short notice given to the Moorwll Cricket Club at the meeting held on November 20 that the option we had believed was also preferred by council officers had now changed has not allowed any meaningful discussions on all variations to the actual proposal being voted on tonight. Thank you.
Sorry. Thanks, Jordan. Councillors, any questions? Councillor Gibson, you're thinking of one?
Sorry, not to Jordan, to the officers, please. What would delaying or deferring this motion, what would the impact be, please?
Mr CEO, one for you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor Gibson. I think based on what the proposal was in the recommendation from officers, if there was an alternative to defer, I don't think it would have an impact because that proposal was saying to do something in the future. It was subject to further funding allocation, so I don't think it's pressing that it would be of major significance or concern if it was deferred.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Councillors, any other questions? Just one, Jordan. So you're happy with the single wicket, the artificial single wicket changeover as opposed to the two turf bench?
Yep. So all three user groups used that preferred option and that was what we thought was going to be the proposal. But on Thursday, we got made to, put to our attention that that proposal was no longer the preferred option and it was going to be just a single two-turf wicket bench.
Yep. No worries. Thanks. Councillor Potter?
Thanks, Jordan. So if you had the artificial turf in the main oval, does that mean you don't want the drainage on the Keegan Street Oval as well?
Probably can't answer that straight away. It'd be something I'd have to discuss with the committee at the Cricket Club, but something that we're open to discussing further. But the key out of this was that our preferred option was definitely the artificial wicket on Moorwll Rec Reserve.
Yep. Councillors, any questions? No? Thanks, Jordan. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheers.
No worries. Councillors, our next speaker on 8.6 is Michael Stobart. Michael, if you'd like to come up? And you'll hear the bell at 2:30. So you've got another 30 seconds. And if you can hang around after the three minutes is up, that'd be great. For any questions? Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Michael Stobart, president of Moorwll Football Netball Club. Throughout the process leading up to tonight's meeting, our club was also presented with four options. Our preferred option also being the implementation of the synthetic hard wicket, which was to be covered with hybrid turf. This still does also remain our preferred option. I'll echo the thoughts of Jordan from the Moorwll Cricket Club and agree that this motion be carried over to a council meeting in early 2026. We agree with Moorwll Cricket Club that funding options for our preferred option be explored further. And in the meantime, it's to our club's preference also that this matter be resolved for good in that future meeting, should it be carried over. That's all from me, basically.
Got to put that microphone on. Any questions for Michael, councillors? No? You'd be happy with the deferral as well? I take it? Yep. Perfect. No worries. Councillors, questions? No? All good. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that.
No worries. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillors, our next speaker is on item 10.4. And I'm just checking, no one's got a conflict of interest on it, which is good. It's a request for commercial commemorative statue on council land and our speaker is Vicky Hamilton. Vicky, would you like to come up? And the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mayor and councillors, for your time. I'm actually just looking for your support. I'm not looking for money out of council. I'm looking for you to support a commemorative sculpture for 140,000 workers that went through the power stations between the 1920s and the 1980s. We need to acknowledge the efforts that they did in producing the energy out of this area for the whole of the state. Many of those workers died and so did their families. There's quite a few of them. I have supported hundreds of workers from the power industry who have passed away. I went to one this afternoon. And I think it's about time we actually acknowledged this disaster that happened here. It needs to be a firm thing of, well, you know, I'm emotional about this because it's something that, it's been a thing of guards for so long to get this up and running. So I'm really looking for your support to place this memorial in the Moi Botanical Gardens and for it to get its dignity in respect of the workers that have passed away. I mean, it's just a tragedy. We have already got in-kind donations, so just so that you know, we have over $40,000 worth of footings being offered. We've gone to all three power stations. We have seven foundations that I've employed a grant officer to write them because I just don't have the time to do that. And they're going to go away and apply for grants for us. So really, I just want your empathy in acknowledging these families because they need this support to make a closure on something that's been going on for a very long time. We've had an apology from the Victorian State Government in 2008, but that's only an apology. We need to have something there for future generations to understand the gravity of what happened here because in 10 years' time, there will be no power stations according to what's happening. And so I want future generations to know what people in this valley gave up.
Yep. Thanks, Vicky. Councillors, any questions? No? All good. Thank you, Vicky.
And I was ready.
You get away easy. You get away easy. Thank you, Vicky. Councillors, we move on to item seven, which is notices of motion. And there are no notices of motion tonight. So we move on to strategic items. Item eight, strategic items for decision. Our first, there are six items in this section. The first item is item 8.1. I note you, councillor Gibson. I note you, councillor Pugsley. Community consultation update, Moi Gardens Caravan Park commencing on page eight of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
Moving, please.
Councillor Gibson is moving. And I noted you, councillor Pugsley?
Given that councillor Gibson beat me, I'll be seconding. Thank you.
Seconding? Okay. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Look, I'm happy to support this. There has been quite a number of submissions that have been handed in, which is really great to see. Our community's got behind the caravan park. And this is a process that has to be done because it's not our land. And once the lease is up, it has to go out to the public like we're doing now. So it wasn't about closing it, but it was about having the public to actually have their say, what they want done with the caravan park. So I really encourage about how many have actually taken the time to put the submissions in. Now, from here, this will be presented back to the February council meeting detailing the options available to continue operating as a caravan park. So for those who were so concerned that we're closing it, no, we're not. It's just we legally have to, once the lease is coming to an end, we have to legally do the steps we're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. I note that our Have Your Say campaign, we had 223 submissions received. And this campaign was run between the 18th of September and the 31st of October. Of those submissions, 80% or 178 were in favour of it remaining as a caravan park. As councillor Gibson has stated, the next strategic steps now are for us to receive a report back to the February council meeting detailing the options available to keep it operating as a caravan park. And I'd just like to conclude to say I'm very much looking forward to seeing this report come back to us in February. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do you have a speaker for the motion? Councillor Morgan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Echoing the beginnings of what my fellow councillors have said, the feedback that we received was vast and impactful, but it was also very clear that there is a need and an appetite for Moi Gardens Caravan Park to be retained as a space for low-cost and short-stay accommodation. I feel that council has a social responsibility to do what we can to ensure we're not adding to... we're not adding to, I guess, the housing insecurity and accommodation insecurity that's currently befalling our community. And I would very much like to see the report as well and see what we can do to ensure that we have this short-stay, low-cost accommodation remaining in our community. And also it would have the added benefit of tourism accommodation. So very much in support of that. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion, councillor Lund?
Just briefly, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think everything's been said, but I think the strong theme that has come out is very clear. And I also believe that we need to reinforce that this is not a decision tonight. We will be awaiting another report in February. And I want to thank the community and the sideholders for all of their thoughtful input and for informing us of their views through their, your say platform. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion, any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll need to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item eight point two. I note you councillor Gibson and I note you councillor Pugsley. Bear with me. Item eight point two, Moi Outdoor Pool Petition commencing on page two forty-four of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
Moving, please.
Moving. And councillor Pugsley?
Seconding, thank you.
Okay. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. This has been a long, long journey that I've been on with the Moi Swimming Club and Reg in particular. He's had a dream for how to utilise the Moi Outdoor Pool and to help the swimming club. We've had quite a few meetings over the years, including meetings at the rec centre in Newborough about more lanes and times. Some was accommodated and others can't be any further. So I'm happy to do this. For the councillors who weren't able to attend the briefing, the out-of-session briefing last week, we had the Moi Swimming Club, but we also had now, thank you, Swimming Victoria that came to attend this meeting or this briefing. And they, they have had a chance since the, the agenda went out to look at the, the recommendation and they've had a conversation with the general manager. And there are so many things that we can do to address the, the issues. And for anyone who's never swum in the Moi Outdoor Pool, it is freezing. I have never ever met, been in a pool that is so cold. And that is hampering them to be able to get further swim meets for so many different issues. It's hampering them. So they came up with a really great suggestion of putting like a carport over the top of the outdoor pool and to actually have it solar panels so it heats, so it's more cost-effective than trying to heat the, the pool as it is. So they, they understand about grants. There's some great grants that are available at the moment. But to just go and get, apply for the grant as is, you need the business case. You need the data to actually have a more favourable outcome for any grant application. So they realise that they're, they're more than happy for us to take the comprehensive strategic assessment that is being looked at. So I'm, I'm more than happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
I wish to reserve it this time. Thank you.
No worries. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion, any councillor wish to speak? Back to you councillor Pugsley.
I think my colleague councillor Gibson has basically said it all. I do have to say that I was very impressed with Swimming Victoria and their presentation that we, we were able to see the other day. And I am very impressed with what Moi Swim, Swimming Club have actually put together so far and the options available for possible funding as well. So yes, definitely in favour. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item eight point three, provision of recreational vehicles dump points in Latrobe City commencing on page two fifty-three of the agenda. I note you councillor Howe, I note, oh, councillor Pugsley first, councillor Pugsley and councillor Howe. Councillor Pugsley?
I'd like to move. Thank you.
Moving, yep.
Happy to second you. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Happy to second. Perfect. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Yeah, through you, Mr Mayor. I would like to, I'm really happy to move this item. I'm eager to see how we can explore the use of already existing infrastructure whilst encouraging users to support our local businesses. Council's next step will be to investigate a range of options that will enhance Latrobe City's RV friendliness. I see this as all Latrobe City's chance to come up with a strategy to make sure that any money that is spent and actions that are undertaken to increase tourism have a beneficial result for our businesses, especially our small businesses, as well as getting maximum return on our investment. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Pugsley. Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Oh, just, yeah, I'll just sort of reiterate what councillor Pugsley said. Yeah, so even though this motion tonight, it's really just a note, the petition and the council's response to it. There are, there is going to be further work done early next year and then we can get the information that we need, that we can make an informed decision. And whether that's going to be to, to have a, have an RV site in each town, in one town or whatever, at least we'll have the information in, in front of us so we can make the decision. We can, we can invest where we know we're going to get great value for our money. So, so just to let our community know that we're still, we're still looking into it and we should get a report back early or mid next year. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yep. Thanks councillor Howe. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Councillor Lund?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge the four hundred and five community members who signed the petition. It is clear there's a strong interest in supporting RV travellers and encouraging visitors to stop and stay and spend time across Latrobe City. I think something worth noting is the financial impacts outlined here are significant. Establishing compliant dump points and suitable sites comes with a huge capital cost. And understanding that is really important. So that regional benchmarking will be important. It's also important to note that this work will be considered in the context of the events and visitors' economy strategy. And we will get that information back and the reports back like councillor Howe has indicated. All of that information will inform what we do going forward. But again, acknowledging the four hundred and five community members that have signed the petition. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion, any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now, I note you councillor Potter. We now move on to item eight point, I note you councillor Morgan. Sorry, got the head up late. Item eight point four, transition reserve policy commencing on page two sixty-one of the agenda. Councillor Potter, I noted you.
I would like to move this, please, Mr Mayor.
And councillor Morgan?
I wish to second it, please.
Second? No worries. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Potter, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So this is a really important step that we're taking to strengthen our economic future. So the Latrobe City Council Transition Reserve was established in the twenty-four, twenty-five council budget with a clear purpose. And that was to ensure that our community is prepared for the significant economic change brought about by the closure of the cold fired power stations and the Victorian Government's transition away from native timber. These shifts are reshaping the region and while they bring challenges, they also bring an opportunity. So an opportunity for Latrobe City to actively shape a more diverse, resilient and sustainable local economy. So the transition reserve is one of the key tools that will help us to do this. So before us tonight, the transition reserve policy, which provides the framework of how these funds will be used. The policy outlines a disciplined and strategic approach directing investment towards enabling economic infrastructure that supports diversification, attracts new industries and most importantly, delivers long-term sustainable employment for our community. So council has previously resolved in December twenty-three that revenue from the sale of lots at the Gipsland Logistics and Manufacturing Precinct, once the enabled infrastructure cost is recovered, would be directed towards attracting investment into Latrobe City. So the proposal is that these proceeds, even when they are realised, will also be allocated into the transition reserve. So this strengthens our capacity to invest in projects that deliver jobs, modern infrastructure and new opportunities for our workers. So the decision we make today is not just, sorry, not just about finances. They're about ensuring that as traditional industries start to change, Latrobe City is not going to be left behind. But instead, active buildings, its future, a future where we can attract new industry, support innovation and create secure employment for generations to come. So thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Potter. Councillor Morgan, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please. I echo a lot of what my councillor colleague has just said. But I'm very happy to support this. It's implementing a policy that sets a formalised framework on how funds are allocated to the transition reserve and how the reserves, reserve funds can be used into the future, which I think is needed, especially as we go through transition, to have a structured framework that can only be good. I will skip over that, but I think having a policy that ensures that we are investing in our future and a strong diverse economy in the Latrobe Valley is very much needed. And I think this will provide security for council and the community going forward, knowing that there are, there's a strict framework on how these funds are amassed and utilised to ensure that we have a bright future ahead of us. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillor Lund?
Thank you, oh, Mr Mayor. I think I'm probably going to be in echo chamber, but this policy is about making sure Latrobe is prepared and when, and that we're not scrambling as we continue to face big structural changes hitting our region. We created the transition reserve in last year's budget because we know what's coming. And we have a responsibility to plan ahead and not wait until we're on the back foot. The policy in front of us gives us a really clear and sensible framework on how we use those funds. It puts guardrails around decision-making and it makes sure, it makes sure that the reserve is used exactly how it should be to support new industries, strengthen our community base and help create long-term sustainable jobs for local people. So I'm not continuing to repeat everything. The policy is practical, it's transparent and it makes sure, it makes sure we're being disciplined with our decisions. Most importantly, it's about us taking control of our future and not having it shaped for us. So I support the officer's recommendations.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillor Pugsley, speaking for?
Speaking for, thank you. I'm not going to echo what my fellow councillors have said. I hundred percent agree. I just want to say I think it's a great strategy and it's going to help safeguard us and deliver better outcomes for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion, councillor Gibson?
Yep, got to put that hand down quick. Okay, look, I, I'm more than happy to support this. And where I'll veer a bit different from the ladies is because those of us who've been on the council for a little while, we know that this has taken a long time to actually get to this point. It's, the, the vision that began many years ago was all in line with transition and our economy, transforming our economy from what it was. We saw what was coming ahead and deliberately the, the glamp was set up. And then this is just one step further. We, we put the, there was a motion in twenty twenty-four to actually put money aside from the Yalorn. Right, what we have normally is Yalorn would pay us, I think it was two million dollars a year in lieu of rates. So we're going to not have that going forward. So we cut the budget so it wouldn't be such a shock in the future. So that money was actually put in a, a transition fund account so that we could actually look at investing it into our future with more, more prospects for jobs. But it's not a free kick. The, the actual eligible projects, well, it's not for, say, I've got a business and I, I want you to bankroll it. It's not like that. It is, you have to have tangible deliverables for our community. So, and you have to look at, okay, how many jobs is this going to bring? How is it going to be different to what we have at the moment? So there is a lot of different parts to this. But I, I have to acknowledge, not just now, but those in the past who had this vision and we've worked on it and now it's coming to fruition. So that's why I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Councillors, do we have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion, any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, excuse me, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillor Morgan, I note you. Councillors, we now move on to the next item of business, item six, eight point five, General Business District Community Outreach Update commencing on page two seventy-five of the agenda. Councillor Morgan?
I would like to move.
And councillor Lund? Yep, sorry.
I would like to move the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Lund? Seconding, yep. Okay. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
I would love to speak, Mr Mayor. Thank you. The motion that's presented to us is what was deferred from last council meeting. This motion at its core seeks to create a Latrobe City-wide community outreach programme, a coordinated and collaborative approach to addressing antisocial behaviour in the community and ensuring that we can address matters early before they become an issue. So mental health issues, social issues like housing don't need to become safety issues in our community. This aligns very well with our council plan where we identified community safety as a priority. As my colleagues and perhaps some of the audience would know, anyone who attended the Victoria Police Community Safety Forum that was held here at Kerners Hall last week, we heard that the police cannot be everywhere at once and nor are they a social service. So it is, I think, really important that we as council can implement a community outreach programme that brings together social services, health services to create a community-focused response to feelings of, I guess, safety and lack thereof in our community. So we can ensure that we're not only supporting people, but we're also freeing up police resources. So they're not spending their time doing someone else's job essentially. And they can then respond to crime in our community quicker. I know business owners are feeling it. I know community members are feeling it. I know our own council staff are feeling it with antisocial behaviour in our libraries and things like that. So I think it is upon us to do something and do it now. This has been coming to us since February and now is the time to get on top of it and make a decision. make a decisive decision to proactively work to deter this antisocial behaviour and improve feelings of community safety within our community. Because the community deserves to feel safe walking down the street and operating their businesses. And people who are facing social issues, health issues, deserve to not be criminalised as a first, at the first instance. So I thoroughly support this approach and I hope we can finally get it off the ground and do something that the community has been asking us to do. So I hope you all support this. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Morgan. Councillor Lund, did you wish to speak?
I'll reserve.
Reserve? No worries. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm just sorry that it's taken so long. In good faith, we were told that a meeting would happen, a minister would come down and see the problems firsthand and come with solutions. Sadly, that hasn't occurred. So we're in the position we are now. So time is of the essence and I'm more than happy to support this because, yes, Moore has an issue, but it's not just Moore, it's across the board. So this is to look at Latrobe City's CBDs and sadly, it's very needed. I will note that in the, the report, it says that because this hasn't been passed before, the officers have held off speaking to Angker Care, Wellways, Uniting, Victoria, Tassie, Quantum and the likes because it hadn't been through council. So that's okay. They will reach out as to what those other agencies can put in place to help us support the, the community and make it a place that is safe for all. And yes, we did have the, we've had two policing forums, if you like, recently, one with the, the Shadow Minister and one with the police. And they are all very much looking at, well, what can we do to actually address the, the issue? Let's be proactive about it. So I'm more than happy to support this. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Gibson. Councillors, do we have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Lund, you're reserved.
Thank you. Yeah, I did reserve. Didn't need to in the end.
You get to speak.
Thank you. So this, this one has been in front of us many, a few times now, and I think we need to be really honest about how we got here. There's been significant delays and I understand, you know, that we were hopeful that we would get a visit from the police minister, but the reality is that we've actually lost time because of it. So meanwhile, our community hasn't stopped raising concerns and we've heard from some of our residents tonight about exactly that. We've been told repeatedly that there are significant community safety issues in parts of our CBDs and, and most of our CBDs, but certainly in Moorwall, in places like the transit hubs and other high-risk areas across towns. These are not political speaking points, they are, they are lived experience. This is how people feel, they feel unsafe and they're asking us to do something. Policing has a role, but the approach needs to be multifaceted. This is about council stepping up and doing what, what we're here to do, supporting social cohesion, connecting vulnerable people with help and improving the overall feel and safety of our towns. We've already put in a lot of groundwork and I acknowledge the officers' work to date and it's been a significant body of work over a number of months. And we've looked at the community connectors model. We've explored what other regions are doing. Oh, I've lost my place. Bear with me, sorry. We've explored what other regions are doing and we've heard loud and clear that Latrobe needs its own approach, something local, flexible and built for the realities of our CBDs. A good outreach model means trained people on the ground and people who can de-escalate situations, support vulnerable community members and get ahead of issues before they escalate. This helps the individuals who need support, but it also helps traders who cannot keep operating under constant uncertainty and pressure. This is about visibility and it's about prevention and it's about making our CBD places where people actually want to be, where they want to go to work, they want to shop, they want to grab their coffee and they feel safe. Allocating the thirty thousand dollars lets us build that, lets us start building that model and it's a first step. And we're hoping that this will help reflect Latrobe's needs and it will inform us as we go forward. Our community deserves action, our traders deserve certainty and our council has a responsibility to lead. I support the recommendations, it's practical, it's needed and honestly, it's long overdue and I encourage my fellow councillors to support it also.
Thanks, councillor Lund. Councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillor Howe, I note you. Councillors, we now move on to item eight point six, Moorhole Recreation Reserve. I note you, councillor Lund. Turf cricket pitches commencing on page two eighty-four of the agenda. Councillor Howe?
I'd like to defer it to a council meeting in the new year, thanks.
Alternate motion to defer?
Please, please.
Yep, if we could get, yep, councillor.
Sorry, seconding that.
Seconding it? Yep, we'll just get our team. What's that? Do you want a recess? Okay, okay. We're going to take a five-minute recess, Elba? Yep, okay, we'll take a five-minute recess and come back at seven eleven. Thanks, councillors.
Thank you for rejoining us after our little break. We now have an alternate motion for item 8.6 up there. councillor Howe, would you like to read out the alternate motion?
I'd love to. That council defers consideration of this matter until no later than the March 2026 council meeting.
You're happy with that?
I'm very happy with that.
And councillor Lund, you're happy to second that?
Happy to second.
Yep, councillors, do I have any opposition? councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Certainly. I was a little bit excited when I saw that we, I thought that we'd actually come to a good, a good compromise with, with this matter. However, we've had two of the three user groups get up tonight and speak and they've asked for, for more time to, to work through this. The, the option that was presented wasn't their preferred option. Up until now, that all groups, I believe, have worked in really good faith here that they want to have an outcome that everyone is pleased with. So I think it's just, it just makes sense for us to defer this until next, to next year to give more time for the groups to come together with our officers and, and come up with a solution that everyone is happy with. I've said no later than the March 26 council meeting. So any financial commitments can then still be included in next year's budget if we need it. However, if they can bring it to our February meeting, if everything's happy, we can then bring it to the February meeting and move it forward, forward then. Bearing in mind, you've got Christmas, you've got New Year, you've got school holidays and everything. So that's why I left it as March. So that's really, that's all I've got to say on the matter. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe. councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Very briefly, I think councillor Howe has covered everything. I think it's really important that all our user groups and everybody involved in this is comfortable with the way we go forward. So the extra time isn't going to impact anything financially or for the organisation at this stage. So I'm more than happy to support this deferment or this alt. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour of the alternate? councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried. Councillors, we now move on to statutory planning. And there are no statutory planning items on tonight's agenda. So we'll move straight on to item 10, which is corporate items for discussion. There are nine items in this section. The first item is 10.1 Sales Process. councillor Lund, councillor Potter, sorry. Sales Process Update, Toners Lane, Moorwall, title volume 12520, folio 257, commencing on page 307. councillor Lund, I noted you. Moving? Yep.
Sorry, moving, thank you.
And councillor Potter?
Seconding please.
No worries. Councillors, do I have any opposition? councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, thank you. This, sorry.
You're alright.
This one has been a long time coming and is really just closing the loop on a process we kicked off in 2022. We went out to the community and asked for feedback and over that four week engagement period, we didn't receive a single submission. People had the chance to tell us if they had any concerns and no concerns have been raised since then. All the behind the scenes work has been done. The subdivision is complete, the public open space contribution has been paid and the new titles are issued. And we now have an updated independent evaluation. Officers have also done the practical prep so that the land is actually ready for sale. So tonight is really just about letting this move to the next step. We've followed the proper process, the community has had its say and there's nothing standing in the way of this progressing, progressing the sale from, through the usual channels. And we're also giving the CEO the authority to finalise the paperwork.
Thank you councillor Lund. councillor Potter, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. So considering this sale of 24 acres of council owned land on Toners Lane in Moorwall, since it was released in the agenda just a few days ago, I've actually had quite a few residents, local sporting clubs and community groups talking to me about this land and how keen they are to actually see it activated. Because at the moment it's sitting, not being used by anybody. So they're really excited to see the opportunities that come with new ownership. As an, an opportunity for the sporting clubs to actually back on to the Toners Lane land. So they're hoping that they will be able to see new facilities that better meet the growing needs of the community. And it's something that I keep hearing. So people are really quite excited about this. With that land just at the moment sitting idle, this really enables us to reinvest in priority areas and continue improving services and support projects that directly benefit residents across Latrobe City. So really happy to support the sale of Toners Lane.
Thanks councillor Potter. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? councillor Potter? councillor Lund? I thought you might want to speak in favour of it seeing as you seconded it. councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, before we move on to the next item, councillor Campbell, you've declared a conflict of interest. If you'd like to leave the room and we'll wait until you're out of the room. Councillors, we now move on to item 10.2. councillor Howe, note you. councillor Morgan, note you. We move on to item 10.2, 2025-2026 Local Sports Infrastructure Fund and 2627 Country Football Netball Programme, commencing on page 319. councillor Howe, you're moving?
Ah yes, hope to move. But the motion, thanks, Mr Mayor.
councillor Morgan, seconding?
Yes, I'd like to second please.
Councillors, do I have any opposition? councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, thanks through you, Mr Mayor. This motion seeks approval to submit funding applications to the 2025-26 Local Sports Infrastructure Fund and the 2627 Country Football Netball Programme. The officers have got four or five projects recommended. They are, the first one's the netball and tennis change rooms at the ANR Rec Reserve. The estimated cost is just a bit over 1.6 million, with our contribution being a bit over 1.1 million. There's a sporting, sports lighting project at Stoddart Oval, Traugan West Sporting Complex. The estimated cost of this is 300,000 with our co-contribution of 50,000. There's also another sporting light project at Duncan Cameron Memorial Park in Traugan. A little bit more, the estimated cost is 335 with our, with our council co-contribution of 53,750. And we're also proposing a large towns recreation reserve master plan, which is estimated cost of 50,000 with our co-contribution of 12,500. Which goes on to say the three major infrastructure projects have been selected from the highest ranked priorities of our current recreation needs assessment. It's also pleasing to see the clubs associated with the two lighting projects have contributed funds towards the work themselves. So well done for that, for their support and for their partnership on these programmes should we be successful. The council contribution for the ANR Change Project will come from the Infrastructure Project Reserve, which was established using our 2425 end of year surplus. I think it's important that council continues to apply and try and secure these grants to ensure that we can upgrade our facilities and to meet our community's expectations and the needs of our sporting clubs. So this is why I'm happy to move. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe. councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Um, I'll defer for the moment, please.
Reserve? Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? councillor Potter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And while all these projects I fully support and they all hold incredible merit, I want to talk particularly about the ANR change rooms that are actually a female change room, which is not really showing up in our alternative motion there. But, so anyone who's visiting the ANR Rec Reserve knows exactly what we're talking about. The current facilities are outdated, they're cramped, they no longer match the scale or diversity of the community that's actually using them. Your NAR sporting clubs, from football to netball to junior programs and women's teams, have grown dramatically in recent years and that growth is an absolute success story. It's something to celebrate, but it also put pressure on the facilities that were built for a very, very different era and different purpose. So improving the change rooms isn't simply about adding new walls and better showers. It's actually about respect, safety and inclusion. So it's about ensuring that female athletes have proper spaces to prepare and recover. It's about giving junior teams facilities that reflect the standards that we expect today. And it's about supporting volunteers, trainers and coaches who give countless hours to keep local sport alive. So this is a really great initiative and I hope the, the grant goes through successfully. So I support my fellow, urge my fellow councillors to, I urge my fellow councillors to support this motion.
Thanks councillor Potter. Councillors, do we have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? councillor Morgan, you reserved?
I did. I'm very happy to speak on this and very happy to support this motion to approve council submissions to the aforementioned funding programmes. We're seeking funding to ensure our community have the sporting facilities they need and deserve. And as was mentioned, especially for our young people and women athletes as well, ensuring that our sporting facilities are equitable, they're accessible and they're inclusive. I also want to highlight the application for funding of the master plans for sporting facilities in our large towns, well, recreation reserves in our large towns. A lot of those are very, very much out of date. And we need to ensure that our reserves and facilities have the master plans they need so we can adequately fund any works that need to be done there and ensure again that our community has the, the facilities that they need to best utilise our assets, our reserves. So I'm very, very happy to support this and echo what my fellow councillors have said. So I hope you will all support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillors, we've had speakers, so we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we'll just wait two seconds. Will we bring councillor Campbell back into the meeting? Just talk quietly amongst yourselves for 30 seconds. That's all right. I can probably do without lilies. Thanks, appreciate it. Councillors, we now move on to the next item, which is item 10.3, Proposed 2026 Schedule of Council Meeting Dates, commencing on page 392 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor? Bear with me, councillor Pugsley was moving. councillor Lund, seconding? Yep, done, bear with me. Moving, seconding. Councillors, do I have any opposition? councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Just briefly through you, Mr Mayor. This is mainly just procedural. So I'd just like to move that we adopt the proposed meeting dates for the 2026 council meeting. All council meetings next, next year will be held at Kernut Hall with the exception of the April meeting, which will be held at GPAC due to venue availability. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
I think everything's been covered. Thank you.
Done. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare that motion carried unanimously. councillor Lund, I note you. councillor Morgan, I saw you second, sorry. Sorry. councillor Gibson and then councillor, sorry. And Morgan, sorry. Councillors, we now move on to item 10.4, Request for Commemorative, Commemorative Statue on Council Land, commencing on page 399 of the agenda. councillor Gibson, I take it you're moving?
Yes, please.
councillor Morgan, I take it you're seconding?
Yes, please.
And I do apologise to councillor London Potter, they just didn't quite get their hands up quick enough. Try it hard. I know you wanted, I know you both wanted to move or second this as well. councillor Gibson, sorry, have we got any opposition? No. councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree with what our speaker said earlier. It's been a long time in coming. I would suggest most of us around this table and in the gallery know of people firsthand that have succumbed to asbestos. And, and it's a cruel disease to, to say anything different. It's just not the case. It is very cruel. Our neighbour had it, a very close friend of ours, her, her husband died of it and the list goes on. So to, to have a permanent statue where people can go to, go with their grief. When people grieving, people do it different ways. But often it's like a grave. They can go to a grave and grieve. Because while they can go to the, the grave of their loved ones, to have a central spot that is all about the, the terrible disease that has taken so many, I think is a very worthwhile. Project's the wrong word to use, but it's a very worthwhile memorial to have and it's so needed. I, I wish that it isn't needed, but we are in the, the industry and the area that it is very prevalent. So it is, in my opinion, very important that it actually gets built. And it's, and I must say, I like it that it's in our Moi area. But I think it's fitting that people can go there. It's a lovely spot that they can actually go to, to, to help in their grieving. So I'm more than happy to support this. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Gibson. councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Um, yes, please, Mr Mayor. I'm pleased to support this motion to endorse the location for the commemorative statue and mural within the Moi Botanical Gardens for a memorial that acknowledges the harm and devastation caused by asbestos. I think it's also quite fitting that we're discussing this item at the beginning of Asbestos Awareness Week. I personally know the impact that asbestos can have on a family and a community. My grandad was a mechanic. He also died of asbestos related cancer. In his younger days, he worked as a crane mechanic in Melbourne. Grandad was afraid of heights and as the buildings got taller, so did the cranes, which made the job a lot less appealing for him. And I believe that's when he decided to move to the country with my grandma, where he continued his trade as a car mechanic and later worked at Murray Galburn as a mechanic also. All of those jobs exposed him to asbestos. Outside of work, grandad put a lot of time and energy into renovating and adding rooms to the family home. A fire broke commission house. Again, he was exposed to asbestos. He died in the year 2000 when I was only five years old. Despite knowledge of the dangers of asbestos, it was still widely used in power stations, in commission homes, in water pipes, brake pads, you name it. Australia was one of the highest users of asbestos per capita. Gippslanders have been affected by asbestos related disease more than anywhere else in Victoria, with a significant number of those in our own community. Asbestos and asbestos related diseases affect everyone. Whether they were exposed through the power industry, their job as a mechanic, second hand through laundering their husbands or sons' work uniform, through home renovations, or whether they cared for those sick and dying, or were simply connected through community as neighbours and friends. This memorial will commemorate all those who have died from and all those touched by this awful diseases. A memorial such as this also helps to ensure that the devastation and harm caused by asbestos is not forgotten. There are growing numbers of cases of asbestos related diseases in young people renovating new, well, renovating homes that are new to them but were built in the 60s and the 70s because the understanding of the harm that asbestos can do is not present in their minds. I want to acknowledge Vicky Hamilton, along with the Asbestos Council of Victorian Guards, who have been fighting for a memorial in the Latrobe Valley for over 25 years, since my grandad was still alive. It's time that we get on with it and allow our land to be utilised for such an important memorial. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Morgan. councillor Lund, speaking for? Yep.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge those who have lost loved ones because of a work related or asbestos related disease. This one really matters. Asbestos isn't some distant issue for Latrobe City. It's about our story and not in a, in a way anyone would ever choose. Our region has been hit harder by asbestos related disease than anywhere else in Victoria. And too fa, too many families know this pain personally. And too many families' lives have been changed forever because of it. I'd also like to acknowledge Vicky and her team, who have supported impacted families for decades and they've come to us with a simple ask now. To create a place in the Moi Botanical Gardens where people can stop, breathe, remember and honour those impacted and those that they have lost. We don't have a neat policy that fits this request and not everything important fits into a neat policy. Some things are about acknowledging the reality of what our community has lived through, about acknowledging the reality of our story and the ongoing impact that this has in our community. And we continue to live through and with this. The officer's recommendation, recommend, recognises that Moi Botanical Gardens is the right place. It's a calm, reflective setting that already holds a lot of meaning for people in our community. Council officers will work alongside guards to make sure that the statue sits in a thoughtful and appropriate spot with the, within the gardens. Funding won't be considered until the 2020, 2627 budget. And Guards has already been actively fundraising and pursuing options to support this themselves, which speaks volumes about their commitment to our community and their commitment to this project. For me, this is about honouring the people behind the statistics, the families who carried the grief quietly.
You're right, take your time councillor Lund, take your time.
And the advocates who have fought so hard for the recognition and support. I support this recommendation.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillors, we've had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried. Councillors, we're just going to take a five minute break. And welcome back again to our live stream of the council meeting being held at Kernod Hall tonight. We're now moving on to item 10.5, international relations, commencing on page 415 of the agenda. Councillor Pugsley, I note you, moving?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Morgan, seconding?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor.
Excellent. Councillors, do I have any opposition? No. Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Thank you. And through you, Mr Mayor. During 2020, the International Relations Committee ceased during COVID and hasn't resumed meetings since. We've had a group of interested individuals, some of which have previously served on the committee and who are amply qualified to further Latrobe City's interests. They have suggested that they set up a committee, a Friends of Committee. Given this, and also that the terms of appointment for all committee members have expired, I think it is a perfect opportunity to establish a working group known as Friends of Latrobe City International Friendship Association and to develop a MOU and develop draft terms of reference. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pugsley. Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. Echoing what councillor Pugsley has just said, I fully support the creation of a Friends of Association. I think this is a good step in separating the economic, sorry, the economic engagement side of our international relations from the cultural side. So we have an active group of volunteers, as was mentioned, who have previously sat on the International Relations Committee, who are keen to foster and create a vibrant cultural connection between our sister cities. And I think it would be wonderful to support them to do so outside the bounds of council, but with the support of council. And that way, we can ensure that the economic sides of our international relations are supported in a way in which they wouldn't be sort of muddled up with the cultural connection and, you know, a focus on festivals and very much person-centric engagement. So I think this is a very positive step forward that I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item 10.6, Quarterly Budget Report, September 25, commencing on page... Note you councillor Potter, note you councillor Howe, commencing on page 444 of the agenda. Councillor Potter, are you moving?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor.
And councillor Howe, are you seconding?
I am seconding, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Perfect. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Potter, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. So we're having, receiving the financial report for the first quarter of the 2526 financial year, as required under the Local Government Act. And in simple terms, this report is a check-in to make sure we're tracking against our expected budget. And overall, we are, so that's the good news. The key message is council is operating within the limits and that we said at the start of this financial year. And most of the differences you'll see are because some funding carried over from last year or because certain income and expenses are timed to happen later in the year. Importantly, our income allocation statement is showing a projected $700,000 cash surplus, which is slightly better than we expected. And this is mainly due to extra grant funding from the Victorian Grants Commission and because we've already achieved a $1.5 million in operational savings that were built into this year's budget. Our comprehensive income statement, which includes things like the timing of grants, forecast of surplus of $32.8 million for the full year. This appears lower than what was originally budgeted, but that's mainly because a large amount of the grant funding was received early in the previous financial year and because we're still completing projects that have been carried forward. The report also confirms that council continues to be in a strong financial position with significantly more current assets and liabilities. The liquid ratio is five to one. So we also began the year with a higher cash balance than anticipated, largely due to the early grants payments and capital funding. So overall, this quarterly report shows that council is financially stable, spending responsibly and delivering our programme of work as planned. So I support the recommendation that council receives and notes reports. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Potter. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
I was ticking off the points, as councillor Potter was saying then. And I have nothing left to say. Happy to support.
Happy to support. Well done, councillor Howe. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we need to put it to the vote, all those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item 10.7, Review of Council Delegations, commencing on page 473 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson is moving. Councillors, do I have a seconder? Councillor Pugsley is seconding. Do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
It's nearly procedural, but that's okay. Look, I'm happy to support this. We have an instrument of delegation to different councils, council officers, sorry. And this is just putting that in place, so I'm happy to support this.
Yep, thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
No, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pugsley. Do I have a speaker against the motion, councillors? Speaker for the motion? Councillor Morgan, yep?
I also support this motion, but I just want to briefly state that this is coming to council for a decision following the recent restructure of areas within the council to now fit under the department and ensure people are delegated the authority they need appropriately. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? We'll put it to the vote then, councillors, all those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item 10.8. I noted councillor Gibson, I noted councillor Lund. Sorry, councillor Pugsley. Authorization of Council Officers Under the Planning and Environmental Act 1987, commencing on page 698. I take it you're moving, councillor Gibson?
Yes, please.
And you're seconding, councillor Lund? Too easy. Do I have any speaker, do I have any opposition? No. Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
I'm delighted to move this one because it means we've got more people in our planning team. For the people who don't realise, it is really hard to get planners and to be able to appoint a new planner and to give them the authority to do that work, happy to do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Briefly, procedural, but welcome aboard to Rob.
Thanks, councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? We'll put it to the vote, councillors? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously and welcome aboard. Councillors, we now move on to item 10.9. Councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, I note you. 10.9 Tourism and Major Events Advisory Committee Update, commencing on page 786. I take it you're moving, councillor Howe?
Happy to move, thanks, Mr Mayor.
And seconding, councillor Morgan?
Yes, please.
Yep. Do I have any opposition? No. Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, yeah. Thanks, Mr Mayor. Always happy to move the Tamiak recommendations to this council. Our Tourism and Major Events Advisory Committee, though, are a great bunch of dedicated and passionate people who take great care in assessing which events council should and should not support. So this month, we've got three significant proposals before us. First one's the 2026 Motorcycling Australia Pro MX. This is a major national, international event attracting around 320 riders and 3,000 spectators. With a council investment of $25,000, the estimated economic impact is $1.8 million, delivering a return on investment of 72.1. Second event is the 2027 Football Victoria Country Championships. This will be a three-day event held at what will be our newly developed Gippsland Sports and Entertainment Precinct, expected to attract approximately 1,350 competitors and over 3,000 spectators. We invest $30,000. This will provide a return on investment of 60 to 1. The final one is the 2027-2031 AGL Luiyang Turrellan Junior International Tennis Championship. This is a tournament we've proudly hosted for 33 years. It's held over 14 days each year and it features the elite under-18 players from over 35 countries around the world. With an annual contribution of council of $45,000 per year, this event generates nearly $3 million per year in economic activity, which offers a return on investment of 66.1. I think it's vital that we keep investing into these events, which keeps Latrobe City a place where people want to live, people want to work, visit and invest. So very happy to move this one, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. I'm very happy to second this motion, to support the recommendations from the Tourism and Major Events Advisory Committee. Firstly, I want to congratulate the team of council officers for their longstanding and tireless efforts to secure a five-year contract with Tennis Australia to retain the AGL Luiyang Turrellan Junior International Tennis Championships in Turrellan. It's been hosted in Turrellan for the past 33 years and it's fantastic that we will be securing it for another five, should this motion be accepted. The projected return on investment for all three events is massive, but especially the tennis, which with a 66 to 1 return on investment, $66 to $1 return on investment is just huge. So absolutely thrilled that the ongoing work of council officers has resulted in this. I also want to make note of the 2027 Football Victoria Country Championships, looking to be one of the first events held at GSEP, the Gippsland Sports and Entertainment Park in Ylawn Wood. It's going to be a huge event that brings people to Morewell and I'm absolutely thrilled to support that. So I think we have a really strong tourism and events economy here in Latrobe and we need to support that and nurture that because the events industry is a real industry and it brings lots of money locally to our region. So very, very happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morgan. Councillor Gibson, speaking for the motion?
Yes, for the motion. Thank you. I nearly got pinned again. Okay, look, I'm really happy to support this motion, but also to qualify something. There was something that was put out recently over social media about council not doing much for the tennis. And we were hamstrung to be able to say anything before because it was confidential. But we, there was, oh. Now, there was councillor Campbell, yourself, councillor Pugsley and myself, and I don't know if there was any of the other councillors, who met with Tennis Australia and Tennis Victoria, if I'm right, and with the Turrellan Tennis Club. And we've had quite a few meetings with them about what can we do to help them for the future and to cement this. And with the conversations we had, we got it locked in for a further five years so far and it's looking to the future. So I'm more than happy to support it and more than happy that now we can say something about that. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote then, all those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item 11, Urgent Business. Are there any motions for urgent business, councillors? No? Then we'll move on to item 12. Bear with me, get through all the paperwork. Item 12, Reports for Noting. And we have one item in this being 12.1. Councillor Potter, I note you, councillor Howe, I note you. Which is 12.1, Contract Variations for the Period July 1, 2025 to 30 September 2025, commencing on page 730 of the agenda. Councillor Potter, I take it you're moving?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor, unless councillor Howe is desperate to move it.
I'm happy to second it, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Potter, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Just to put it into everyday speak, I guess, around these variations. So what we're looking at is a report on the contract variations covering the period from the 1st of July to the 30th of September. So this report tells us when changes have been made to existing council contracts, things like adjusting the scope of work, fixing errors and responding to unexpected conditions. So council currently has 194 active contracts and in this quarter, 14 of them had changes made. So that's just over 7%. It's also important to note that 11 of these 14 contracts are completely funded by the state government and not by council. So across the 14 contracts, 42 variations were approved. All of these were within the overall project budgets and in fact, seven variations actually saved money, returning the funds back to the projects. So the reasons for the variation included things like fixing the design, credits that reduced project costs, requests from service authorities like the power and the water providers, unexpected conditions once work started and most commonly, direction from the project's client, which accounted for just over half the variations. So the important message here is that every variation was managed properly, aligned with our procurement policy and stayed within budget. Nothing here signals over spending or mismanagement, just normal adjustments that happen as projects progress. So I recommend that council receives and notes the contract variations report. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Potter. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
Oh, I just had one little point. Just on the seven variations that were positive, just shows that our council officers and contractors, they're more than happy to work together to deliver the strong outcomes for our community while ensuring that we do achieve the best possible value for our dollars. So that's good to note that.
Thanks, councillor Howe.
Thank you.
Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare that motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to items for tabling, and there are no items for tabling on tonight's agenda. So we'll move on to the next item, which is meeting closed to the public to consider confidential information. And under section 66.2a of the Local Government Act 2020, councillors, do I have a motion? Note you councillor Gibson, note you councillor Lund. Do I have a motion to conclude the open portion of the meeting and close the meeting to the public to consider confidential information? Moving, councillor Gibson?
Yes, please.
Seconding, councillor Lund. Do I have any opposition, councillors? No? Okay, councillors, I declare the meeting closed to the public at 8:01? Yeah, we need to vote on that first, sorry. All those in favour of closing the meeting? Thanks, councillor Potter, councillor Potter, councillor Lund, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. This concludes the open session of tonight's council meeting. The meeting will now be closed to consider confidential business listed by the CEO. Thank you to the members of the community viewing our live stream and to those that have stayed with us throughout the meeting and attended tonight's meeting at Kernod Hall. Thank you to everyone, and we look forward to you joining us at our next meeting. Good night. Thank you.